All right, we'd like to call this meeting of the West Alice West Milwaukee School District to order, please. If we could stand for the pledge, and Mr. Lee, would you please lead us?
Of course. My pledge to the United States is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its throne.
All right, thank you. Ms. Sett, can you do the roll, please? Mr. Schultz?
Here.
Mr. Yustra?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Keller?
Here.
Ms. Kulu?
Here.
Mr. Justum?
Here.
Mr. Sickich?
Present.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
And President?
Here.
Proper notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the open meeting laws of the state of Wisconsin. Do we have any additions or modifications to tonight's agenda? Tonight, the part of Dr. Lexon will be played by Deidre. Thank you everybody, please welcome Deidre. Do we have any public comments for this evening? Nope, speaking none. All right, so then we will move on to item number seven, our superintendent's pledge.
Good evening, so we're going to start with our report from our two students from West Alice Central High School.
Hello, I'm Tori.
And I'm Ann Wells.
We are here to share a few of the awesome things happening at West Alice Central High School.
Homecoming kicked off the month of October on a high note. Our students and staff showed their school pride by participating in dress-up days that included sports slash jersey day on Monday, Hawaiian day on Tuesday, and noon day on Wednesday, throwback Thursday in Bulldog gear on Friday. On Wednesday, the student council brought back powder puff football for the first time in the last few years, and had an incredible turnout from the students. In the first games, the seniors beat the sophomores by two touchdowns, while the freshmen beat the juniors by three touchdowns. The two winning teams met on Friday before the varsity football game and played for the championship. The seniors earned the win with a hard-fought victory by a score of twenty-four to twelve. The week closed with the annual pep assembly where students competed in games like egg toss, musical chairs, and tug-of-war. Fall athletic teams, including the powder puff teams, were also introduced and the class floats were shown off for all to see. At four P M., the homecoming celebrations continued with the homecoming parade leading to the pre-game tailgate at the athletic complex. At seven P M., the homecoming game began as our Bulldogs tried to sink the New Berlin West Vikings. Homecoming week closed with the dance on Saturday night that over five hundred of our Bulldogs attended, more students than ever in recent years, and by comparison last year there were around three hundred students. The students had a blast showing off their dance moves under the New York lights. A special thanks must be given to Angela Goloski, Alex Garcia, Carrie Hansen, Justin Marine, Ryan Rutz, and David Dolnick, and our West Alice Central Booster Club. These individuals put in countless hours prepping for this week's events, and it would not have been as exciting without them.
On Monday, October first, seventy-five students went to the Hispanic College Fair at Cardinal Stritch University. There, they were able to meet with over fifty-five colleges located in Wisconsin and throughout the United States. The college representatives provided students with information about admission requirements, the application process, costs, scholarship opportunities, and dates to visit their campuses. Our Bulldogs were energized by this event and are excited to start applying to college. A big shout-out and thank you to Ms. Wofford-Starr for organizing this awesome field trip.
World Language Club's Oktoberfest is a time for fun, friendship, food, and of course competitions. Events included yodeling, jerk-and-toss, pretzel pass, chicken dancing, German polka, sauerkraut competition, mug relay race, and the following were eaten and enjoyed: baut ware, spitzel, and black forest cake.
On Tuesday, West Alice Central hosted forty-seven teachers, administrators, and avid directors for a day-long avid elective teacher training. The avid trainers provided numerous opportunities for a group to collaborate, share ideas, reflect on successes, and develop a personal action plan. The training concluded with a think-tank which gave everyone the opportunity to identify struggles and brainstorm solutions that they could utilize. Training like these allows educators to learn from each other and bring back new ideas that can be implemented classroom and school-wide. The following day, Central hosted an avid professional development session titled "From Buy-In to Belief." Throughout the module, teachers learned more about the avid school-wide system. The leads also modeled new instructional best practices. Training like these allows educators to learn from each other and bring back new ideas that can be implemented classroom and school-wide.
On Friday, October nineteenth, forty-eight students from Central were invited to attend the Meet Milwaukee event on October nineteenth at UW-Milwaukee. They had the opportunity to attend sessions in the area of academic training interest, attend a resource fair, review the application process, and take tours. They will be well-prepared for the onsite admissions being hosted at Central on December fifth. On Wednesday, forty or more students will be taking a field trip to UW-Oshkosh to learn more about the admission process and experience a day in the life of an Oshkosh Titan student.
This year, our PBIS Bulldog leadership team is continuing this tradition of handing out sweet reconmissions. Throughout the month of October, teachers nominate students who have been responsible by being on-time or for being a positive leader in our West Alice Central community. A total of ten, or a hundred and ten, yes, a hundred and ten, including me, students received the coveted recognition along with the "We Are Bulldogs" T-shirt. It must also be acknowledged that the freshmen have the least amount of referrals out of all the grade levels. Way to go, freshmen! Thanks for showing up for class and what it means to be a responsible, engaged leader.
The fall 2018-19 athletic season is coming to a close with only our girls' swim and dive team and boys' volleyball season still ongoing. A number of our student athletes finished their season off well in the Saturday's cross-country sectionals race at Brookfield East. Including personal records, our girls' volleyball program finished off the year at Brookfield Central last Thursday, and we are all excited to see where next year takes our girls' volleyball program. They're on track to make progress as we continue to build the program. Our football team closed out their season at Greenfield and had a large senior class with over twenty-plus seniors departing our program. We are all excited to see where life takes us twenty-plus young men in the future. Our boys' soccer team finished off one of their best seasons in over eighteen years, including the crosstown rivalry win against Nathan Hale before their season closed in the playoffs at Walker Shell West. On Friday, our boys' volleyball team will travel to Pius for their playoff match against the Pops. Next week, Friday and Saturday, the West Alice Wave co-op with Nathan Hale. Divers and swimmers will head into their sectional races at Walker Shell South with the divers on Friday and the swim portion on Saturday. All of our winter sports are in their preseason preparations with workouts, open gyms and meetings to get their registration and paperwork in order for their season kicking off with practices in early November. We look forward to updating you on the success of our Boys and Girls Basketball, Wrestling Team, Boys Swim and Dive, Bowling and Gymnastics Teams.
Here are some upcoming events to look forward to at Central. Next week, well, this week, Central will be having its annual Think Pink Week. Throughout the four-day week, many fundraisers will be taking place with all proceeds going to A, B, C, D after breast cancer diagnosis. The week will close on Thursday, October twenty-fifth, with our Laps for Life event. Here, students will pay five dollars to walk during one class period. In addition, the staff will be having a special taco bar lunch from eleven to one. Please feel free to come to Central this day, enjoy some tacos, do some laps with our Bulldog family.
The cast and crew is excitedly preparing for their curtain call for Shrek the Musical. Performances will be held at seven-thirty P M. on November ninth, tenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth, and the eighteenth at two. Come to check out the many talents of our students and staff.
On Thursday, November twenty-eighth, Central will be hosting its annual academic preview night from five to seven. Here, families from our WAWM intermediate schools will attend a presentation about Central's many course offerings, avid, and extracurricular opportunities. From there, our future Bulldogs and their families will be able to tour the school and meet our Central staff.
Do we have any questions for our students?
How about it, where can I get one of these T-shirts? Glad you asked. Sweet reconmissions.
Well, thank you guys, you're both welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting tonight. If you cannot, please, you know, go home and enjoy the rest of your evening. We'll see you guys in a couple weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Up next, we have our school showcase from Walker Elementary School.
For those of you who haven't met, I'm Tracy Fisher Tubbs. This is our school counselor, Kristen Brunell, and Morgan, one of our professional educators. She's on a first, second, third grade team this year. And we're going to share with you some of the things that we've been doing at Walker.
Yeah. Bright spots.
So every summer for the last six or seven years, we have tried to take care of our summer slide, and I'm sure many of you are aware that kids, when they aren't raining, are doing things over the summer. When they come back in the fall, they have a lot of work to make up. So basically, they can lose almost two months of school, so they sign a contract. All of our students, every single one of them, signed a contract for things that they were going to do over the summer. And the contract kind of looked like this, and they had some options. They could do the library reading program. In fact, the library comes out and they get their library cards right there at school. They could do our online learning platforms. They could come to summer school, or...
Seesaw Bingo.
Seesaw Bingo. I don't know about that one. Why don't you tell them a little bit about that?
So Seesaw Bingo is actually made by our tech committee this year, or last year, sorry. And they made a whole bingo sheet of things that they could do in different categories, like one was things outside, or drawing, or replying to a book. And then they would post those online for the teachers to see and reply to that they kind of did with their families. So they're really fun activities that weren't just boxed into online platform or reading. They kind of went outside, like they did writing activities, art activities, so meeting all the areas.
And we'll talk to you a little bit more about Seesaw in a minute. So they all signed the contract, and if they completed their contract, they got these lovely shirts, which you all have. Forty-five dollar Target gift certificate. So we had some extra shirts because some people decided they didn't want the shirt they wanted, the gift certificate, so you all get a shirt. So we buy them for all of our four Kers and all of the new students that come, and so we just have some really odd sizes. I think we're going to give to Marty for his grandkids because then we'll be done and able to move on. But it is a good incentive for the kids, and they really like wearing the T-shirts because no one else gets one. You have to do the summer contract in order to get one, or be a new kid. So this is the picture of all of the kids that finished their learning contract.
Sixty percent.
Yep. That's pretty awesome. Sixty percent of our kids did summer learning, so. All right, you want to talk about Seesaw?
Sure. So part of our bright spots we consider at Walker is our Seesaw platform, and it's a really great piece for engagement inside and outside of the classroom. And the main gist of it is that it's a student-driven digital portfolio. So instead of previous platforms we've used in the past, we've switched over to Seesaw because it draws parents in from home, where it's, for me, the first time I saw it, it reminded me of like Facebook, but it's for kids in a learning environment, and parents can like things their child is posting, make comments saying, "Great job, I'm proud of you for working hard on this," and they really get a great snapshot of what their child is working on throughout the day and during the week at school.
And their goals are posted on there. That is really helpful for parents to know what they're working on. Yes?
Would you like questions at the end?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
That's fine, that's why I was...
Yeah, so we also, along with not only posting their goals and then up to reaching their goal, they're posting things that they're working on throughout to reach that goal so parents see the steps that they're making and maybe even things that they might need to work on to reach their goal. And then even before we put the goals in, we did learners' profiles, so that's kind of just figuring out their learning style, what they like. So as teachers, it's good to see that, and also even to post it for the parents to see the best way for their child to learn. Is it a quiet spot? Is it with music, visuals, all of that things for the modification and what they enjoy at school was posted.
And part of how we came to Seesaw is for a piece where students are more engaged with this, where it's that student-friendly option we're looking for, and because we got feedback on our parent satisfaction survey, that they wanted to be more engaged and see more and get more feedback with what students were doing throughout their school day.
And one particular spot, like teachers would have a newsletter, or they'd be sending emails, or they're sending things home through the folder that sometimes get lost. So Seesaw has been a really great spot for us to have all the teacher and classroom newsletters. You can send announcements to parents through there, so that's our main communication along with adding their learning. So it's a really great communication piece.
All right, so we've seen lots of positive feedback, positive results from Seesaw. We have teams that consistently post, and we have actually a short video here of a little five-year-old who participated in our Seesaw Bingo this summer. So you're going to see Liam reflecting on his favorite book.
Oh, that didn't work. Okay, I was like, oh no.
This is my favorite book. I'm Liam, and my favorite book is Dragon Love Taco Sticks. And you know, my first reason, because the kids say, "Hey, why are all your dragon friends crying?" Because they hear the news and it says, "No more taco for dragon," but the spicy salsa gives them the tummy trouble. What the tummy trouble? Don't want to cry and die. She's really fired, and they used to have a taco party. You see that? See? Let me just show you guys. You know, it's funny. They have a giant frog with a giant brain, which is cool. Right? Yeah.
So those are the kinds of things the kids can post for their parents and say, you know, "I'm working on multiplication, and this is how I do it," and it's just a really neat platform for parents, everybody to stay connected.
The kids are getting positive feedback and comments from their teachers, as well as support and feedback from their parents at the same time.
So our challenges, and maybe some of you who are in business can help me with this, we're having a hard time keeping everybody up. You know, we've been a high-achieving school for a couple years now, and it's difficult to keep everybody's mindset and their passion for the learning and their innovativeness and all of those things at this high level every day so that we could continue to perform at the level that we're at. So if you all have any ideas for me, that would be great. Some of the things that we have put in place for this year is, I was part of the Ideal Player book study. I don't know if you guys have read that book. Excellent, excellent book. There are three things that every team player needs. You need hunger, meaning you have to want what you're working on. You need to be humble and not be the person that takes all of the credit. And you need to have some people smart and be able to read the people in your group and understand what, how they're reacting to what you're saying so that you can adapt. So we all are setting goals. Everyone has a goal, and we journal and reflect monthly and come up with new ways that we can, you know, different goals and things that we can focus on. We are incorporating our deeper learning competencies, and we sent our teachers on a field trip on the first professional development day. They all got to ride the city bus, and some went down to the enrollment center, some went to Aldi's, some went to...
Well, one group went to Goodwill and then Aldi's, and we went all the way to that place on Greenfield and walked like twelve miles.
And so it was a real experience of equity, and they actually saw one of our families on the bus. The mom was taking them to daycare. She was going to drop them off, get back on the bus, go to work, work all day, go back on the bus, pick up her kids, get back on the bus, and it was quite an experience for everyone. I think we all learned a lot.
And we saw a student, too. That was really cool. He had the biggest smile on his face to see all his teachers on the bus.
And we do do, you know, incentives and things for the teachers, but it just, if you have any ideas for us to help keep everybody moving, that would be great.
And then something unique.
All right, so we took place in a book study for our PBIS committee and anyone on staff who was interested called Formative Five by Thomas R. Horr. And this is a long quote, but it really captures very well the essence of the book and what its goal is. And the whole point of Formative Five is to not just reflect on our school effectiveness with academics, but the kind of people we're putting out into the world. We're aiming to create good citizens who are responsible and contribute to our society in a positive way, and that's our big picture that we are trying to keep in mind at Walker.
Characters higher than intelligence.
So this fits really well with our Walker belief to try to teach the whole child. So things we already do is we really focus very strongly on building relationships with the kids, because the better you know them, the better they know you, the higher efficiency in learning and engagement that takes place in the classroom. We do focus on our academics, of course, but we also make sure we're focusing on the social and emotional well-being of each child, that they're getting their basic needs met and their emotional needs met. We are taking some time to make sure we're being innovative learners in the classroom and really engaging kids in deeper learning experiences that have them curious and wanting to learn more. Last year, our book study was on growth mindset because we're really trying to instill in students grit and resiliency, that when things get hard, because they will, to keep going.
And teachers.
And teachers.
Yeah, and teachers.
And now this year, we are tying that into our Formative Five, and we're really looking at Formative Five as our glue to glue all these things together. So we have five success skills that the students are learning, and they're empathy, self-control, integrity, embracing diversity, and grit.
Yep, and kind of connecting with those. So we have all of those success skills, and we kind of did a year at a glance. So we took two months throughout the year to focus on these success skills within the classroom. So we asked the teachers to find time each week to do a lesson. We provided lessons and resources for each one. We've also focused on, so to start with, we did self-control. We focused on doing that in assemblies and have videos. Also, we had a community member even comment on it and send a letter. We put the word on our gate so everyone that's driving by can see that by the playground. That's been powerful for the community to connect with us, and we've tried to post things on Seesaw and on, what would you call it, the video when they walk in the office that they can see.
Instead of a printed newspaper, because, believe it or not, the parents didn't want any more to read. They asked us to put it in a video format, so we do post it on Facebook and whatever, but we also run it on a TV in the office so that when they come in and they're waiting for their kids or a speech or whatever, they can see the video.
Yeah, so we kind of put what we thought would work best in each month. Obviously, diversity kind of goes with cultures and holidays in December, and grit, we really wanted to instill before testing and work with that and testing skills. And then integrity and empathy, we did cover a little bit last year with mindfulness, so we put those at the end of the year as kind of a review. So with that, we have staff meetings where we go through what it means, what we expect in the classroom, and then we actually have another staff meeting where we reflect on how it went and if there's anything else we need to touch and how the kids have been showing it.
So at that second staff meeting, when they return, they're expected to bring evidence and data with them, evidence of how they taught the lessons, whether it's Seesaw posts or pictures or anchor charts, just to show and talk about with the group how they taught these lessons and how it went. And then data for, mainly with our star cards and our behavior referrals, looking at our numbers comparing to prior years and prior months. We're really excited to get our hands on our October data to be able to compare to September to see, because we see just through our firsthand experience that it's making a difference. And now with our September data, we are able to talk about how we're doing a good job of self-control inside, but our data is showing us we're not safe with our bodies outside on the playground. So we're really going to focus on controlling our bodies outside and keeping hands and feet to self, stuff like that.
Yeah, so with that, at the rest of October, when we reflected with the staff meeting, we decided sportsmanship with self-control would be the last week, so that was really nice to have that reflection before we were done with self-control and how we could modify it to help our school.
So the kids made you a video so that you know more about self-control.
That's really cute. It's hilarious.
Hello, welcome to Walker News Network. My name's Adam, and this is Aiden. Thank you, Emily. We have some working modern Walker and women who use self-control, outbreak that is starting rapidly, joining all of us, helping infected with contagious success skills. My effect is maintaining control of your emotions, increasing your chances of success and having more focus. I'm getting worried now that we have an interview with one of these students, hopefully live to assist us.
Thanks, Aiden. I'm here live with Madeline and keep persistence. Madeline, welcome to the show. Can you tell us about a time you used self-control?
I did sit down and cry, yeah.
That's a great way to show self-control. How did that make you feel?
Great.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Madeline. Let's go back to the studio with some heartbreaking news.
That's the last of it. Thanks to me, for you know, just told that there's a lot of self-control being shown in team respect. I've given George a very similar story.
Thank you, Emily. This self-control is spreading faster than predicted. I'd like to be welcome, call you to the show. How have you been showing self-control?
I am very, so very grateful to be here.
Wow, that's wonderful to hear. How do you make me feel?
Happy.
That's great. This self-control thing is really catching on here at Walker. Wait, this is starting to get out of control. I've told that Team Diversity also has a case of self-control. So I'm trying to run out of this story.
Thank you, Georgia. This is really incredible. Frankie from Team Diversity has also been infected and showing self-control in his classroom. Can you tell me a little bit about that?
So I was feeling a stream box last semester at Frankie's age. So first of all, I took a deep breath and counted fifty-five, and I felt calm.
The amount of self-control we're seeing here at Walker is amazing. How do you feel at work?
I felt good and very much self-controlled, probably relaxed.
It seems as though more and more students are coming down with self-control at Walker. Aiden, I don't know what's in this water at Walker. Want me to bottle it and sell it?
They feel awesome.
Thank you. I guess we know because I went and bowled it with my homework. When, can you tell us how you visually show self-control?
I've been showing self-control by, now the teachers told me not to eat the birthday tree. I didn't eat it, and I don't feel happy because the birthday girl had it first.
Well, I guess it's true, what they say. Could be dangerous, contagious. Word is coming that this is spread at Exeter Peace, where Frankie and Madeline were.
Thank you, Brown. We keep going and constantly spreading, where one of our sons is with Mac.
Mac, how does this success skill affect you?
Well, it affects me by not following my friend. I'm getting all the work done. I'm being a bit more responsible, which is nice, so I'm not making any wrong choices. And the best part is I can make all the work done, so the teachers aren't complaining that my work isn't good.
This sounds like this infection is very good and harmful. Mac, are you having any other examples in your classroom?
Absolutely. I've also had other classmates who've been done mistakes and raising their hands and speaking quietly in the hallways, and they are even staying focused on the work.
That is truly amazing. Thank you for joining me today, but we have reached a full-blown outbreak. This is also effective excellence for us and has now reached everything in the building. But Hannah was live with yet another student.
Thank you very much, Frankie. Now I'm here live with T.J. Thank you for joining us today. It was a pleasure. Can you explain to the readers what this success skills is?
Can you explain to the viewers what this success skills has meant to you?
Oh, it's been great at Walker, right? One of the things I was playing football, I got pushed by this kid, but suddenly retaliating, I do a four, that he be inspired by this student at Walker.
Thank you. I think what we're seeing here at Walker is nothing short of a miracle. T J, you have any advice for the people there watching that thing right now?
Yes, if you wanna feel good about yourself and keep your focus in your game, make sure you come to Walker, whether it's self-control or contagious, and the students are safe, responsible, respectful.
Thank you again for sharing with us today, it was a pleasure. And we'll head back to the studio with Emily, Aiden, for some thought about.
Thank you. Education is saying that we can do more stuff for the team in decades. I'm sure this isn't the last time we'll see self-control here at Walker. I think this is here to stay. I'm actually starting to feel a little different myself. Are you okay?
I don't know. I still feel like I need to do my schoolwork instead of playing football tonight. I'm sure this is serious.
Okay, I'm gonna go work out at the gym instead of eating some donuts. See ya.
Alright, so for everyone here at Walker, have a great day.
So, we have a few little stars. Any questions or clarifications? Yes, sir.
I did have one question. I just was wondering about the Seesaw program. Were there other programs like that as a reason why you picked Seesaw over different options that were out there? Just wondering why it's available.
One of the reasons we picked Seesaw is because our four-year-olds use iPads and they can make their own flipped lessons. It's really easy for the kids to use.
Okay.
Um, so that's one of the reasons, but I just had an adept conversation with Mr. Lesser about how, um, I felt he could use it at the high school level. You know, if you're studying Romeo and Juliet, you could do like update every day, this is what I learned in class. It would be a great way to review before the exam. And then you could show your parents the exam and tell them what you got on the exam and what, why you got these questions wrong. So it is something that they could use all the way up, um, but we just picked it 'cause it's the easiest for the kids to use.
I'd say no, if you had looked at other, like, programs like it and if there was, like, uh, features that Seesaw had that other programs didn't have or supplement.
We used other programs that you could post goals, but there was no way for, um, us to send it to the parents or for the kids to apply. So this is really nice, like, you can put it in Google Drive, but this way, everyone is connected. And like Kristen said, it is kind of like a Facebook format where there's a feed. And with, like, the goals, we like them to highlight and respond to it. So it's really more interactive, where we've had things where they can put goals and they're learning, but it wasn't connected with everyone. So that's where we really liked this piece.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Just a comment on what you just said, uh, in regards to sharing it with, uh, with one of the high schools. I think that's a brilliant idea, and I think more ideas need to come around, because that's, that's showing collaboration, not just with the elementary schools, but going into the high schools and saying, this is what we need to do. I congratulate you on that. Thank you.
Well, he gave us a lot of good ideas to bring our school improvement.
Fantastic. That's, yeah, happy to be glad.
Thank you.
So you said you used it as a parent communication tool. Is this your primary parent communication tool?
We, that was our goal this year. So last year, it was more, we just wanted to make sure that student work was on there, all parents were connected and they were seeing the work. And this year, 'cause we have goals for our Seesaw per month, what we are doing in Seesaw, so it's our goal this year that we have our newsletter in one place as a school, so it's not as confusing for parents, 'cause we had all these different ones. And that was one of the things that they had asked us.
And how do you feel this compares to other communication tools?
Well, I think, I'm not sure about other people's, but I think it's really nice, especially as a team, to have one place to go to for learning, goals, and connections with parents and even collaboration within students. So I think it works really nicely.
And how, how, how's parent feedback been on the use of the tool?
I think they really like Seesaw, especially because they can see their students learning and respond to it right away.
Then just one, one more question, it may lead it to one, one other. Um, I take it, are you using the free version, I take it, or are you using the paid version?
That's a good question.
That's a good question. That's a tech committee question.
That's a tech committee question. I think you're using the paid one.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause it looks like the, the, you know, the free version offers, offers quite a bit. And then there's the paid version. And then, I, you know, working in an enterprise, you know, I know that when you get, if you get more collaboration with schools, your price is going up.
Yeah.
We used to use Epiphany, but it just really didn't fit our needs. The kids couldn't really put the videos and, and like Morgan said, have that interactive piece. So this is something, will we, you know, develop and use something later, probably, but for, it fits our needs very well right now.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, did we make it in our twenty minutes? There you go, ladies. Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, next we have the legislative update, and there's a few updates from the state legislature. Um, school districts receive their certified general aid figures, so as required by state statute, on or by October fifteenth of each year. The Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction has provided the certified amount each public school district will receive of the four point six five, six billion appropriated for general state aid in the eighteen nineteen school year. The amounts, uh, this amounts to seventy-two point seven five million, one point six percent increase in general aids compared to last year. Um, so for the West Dallas, West Milwaukee School District, it meant that, um, our aid amount went up. So this year, in general aid, we're receiving fifty million, five hundred sixty-eight thousand, three hundred forty-seven dollars, which last year, we received forty-three million, six hundred seventy-six, five hundred and eighty dollars. Um, that is a dollar increase of six million, eight hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars, which is a percent change of fifteen point seven eight percent. Um, the governor on October fifteenth announced a plan that it said if he is re-elected, he is planning to increase state funding for schools to two-thirds of their total costs, echoing a pledge made this summer by his Democratic opponent, Tony Evers. Um, two thousand eighteen could be a record year for school referenda. On November sixth, two thousand eighteen, ballots will include eighty-two referenda questions in sixty-one school districts. Over half, forty-four of these ballots request, um, the requests will ask voters to approve the issuance of debt. If all are approved, those requests would provide one point two-five billion dollars for improvements to school facilities. The requests come on top of the five point, or excuse me, five hundred and fifteen point eight million in debt issuance approved by voters via local school district referenda earlier this year. The remaining thirty-eight referenda on the November ballot are for operating purposes. Of these, twenty-four seek approval of non-recurring revenue limit exemptions up to a hundred and fifty-seven million dollars, while fourteen ask for recurring exemptions to the revenue limit totaling twenty-six point one million dollars. Um, so a large year this year at voting day for referenda in our area and across the state. Um, at the federal level, there are no updates at this time. Any questions about that one? Nope? Um, so on to our, um, school district recognitions. At Central High School, students Ella Gazetti and Christina Sanfilippo attended the Wisconsin Family Career and Community Leaders of America, F C C L A Leadership Academy. On Monday, October fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, their application to become Region Seven representatives was approved, so they will help organize regional and state meetings throughout the school year. On October sixteenth, Central hosted avid elective teacher training with over forty-seven area educators, administrators, and avid directors attending. Throughout the school year, deeper learning coach Kent Klenowski and innovation coach Christina Krailik are offering avid certified training after school to teachers at Central and West Milwaukee Intermediate School. At Nathan Hale High School, the science teacher, Mr. Radich, presented at a national conference for the Society of Science and the Public. Over twelve hundred and fifty teachers applied and two hundred teachers were selected to attend. Mr. Radich's supporting underrepresented students was one of fifty presenters. Students Hannah Delau, uh, Jayla Rhodes, and Caitlin Vang are taking their state exam to earn their certified nursing assistant credential. They will be the first students from Nathan Hale to enroll in the youth apprenticeships at Aurora West Dallas Medical Center. At Shared Journeys, uh, Jenny Stalcinski and Lisa Cola completed the childcare professional coursework through Work and Family Consulting and are now licensed childcare providers. Um, for those of you who don't know, this is the first year we've actually been able to offer childcare through a grant at Shared Journeys, so that the students who are attending our high school programs and Shared Journeys have, uh, daycare on-site to send the students to during the day. Um, so they had to get licensed as daycare providers in order to do that. Um, the Way Church in Greendale held a diaper drive for Shared Journeys. At Longfellow Elementary, teachers Ally Cardwell, Dana Farina, and Amy Bear organized a deeper learning experience for fourth and fifth graders at the West Dallas Farmers Market. Students explored learning topics related to healthy food choices. They selected and prepared food and then invited their parents in to share a meal. At Madison, Mrs. Fetschko and the Student Council, um, conducted a penny war to help raise money for the victims of recent hurricanes. Our Recreation and Community Services Department, Linda Gritzmacher, organized Zumba-thon held on October twelfth, two thousand eighteen at Lane. The event raised over fifteen hundred dollars for the Sodexo Backpack Weekend Meals Program that supports our students in our schools. Amanda Switchenberg has been awarded two Silver Star Awards from the Wisconsin Park and Recreation Association. She will be presenting information about her work and receiving her awards at the W P R A Annual State Conference at Green Bay Convention Center on Thursday, November first, two thousand eighteen. And Mrs. Stacy O'Foley from the Carrying Senior Service dropped off a generous donation of school supplies collected by her company for students in our schools. Any questions about that one? No?
Thank you. Alright, we'll move on to item eight, the Board President's Report. We'll do a review of the calendar. Um, tonight is Monday, October twenty-second, and we have a regular Board of Education meeting, um, including our final budget and tax levy. Immediately following that, we will have a College and Career Writingness Workshop on update on Alex. On Monday, November twelfth, starting at six P M., we have a regular Board of Education meeting. Following that, we'll have a workshop on the service to our stakeholders and community. And the workshop topic is how surveys are developed and survey results. On Monday, November nineteenth, at six o'clock, we have a Recreation and Community Services Workshop, our Recreation Department's annual report. And then on Monday, November twenty-sixth, at six o'clock, we have a regular Board of Education meeting and a superintendent workshop on the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school calendar proposals. Do any board members have any community updates or any events, Joe?
Yeah, I was able to attend the Shared Journeys open house that they had this past week, last week, um, just to see the new space that they have. And I was given a tour by one of the Shared Journeys students, and then she was able to tell me about the new daycare area that they have there and show me that, which is very nice. It's a wonderful resource. I mean, some, anyone who's had kids in daycare and all expensive that can be. And they have, you know, all the, the same tools and items that you would at a, a normal daycare center anyways, that they would have at their availability. So that's, uh, a great resource for them, uh, to have good, um, childcare for their children while they're learning themselves. And then the upstairs portion where they have their classroom and all their resources as well. So it's great to see the new space, and I think it looks like, uh, it would be very useful for them. And I hope that can be something we can, uh, have for long term.
Anybody else? Thank you. Alright, we will move on to item nine, our consent agenda. We have four items to consider this evening. Um, item nine point one, the approval of minutes from the October eighth, twenty eighteen Regular Board of Education meeting, and the October fifteenth, twenty eighteen Special Edu-, uh, Special Board meeting. Item nine point two, the employment summary. Item nine point three, the supplementary contracts. And item nine point four, the financial summary. Do any of those items removed and separated? No, if not, we'd be looking for a motion?
So moved, seconded?
Seconded.
Alright, removed and seconded. Any additional comments or questions? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll go on to item, uh, ten, our action items for tonight. Item ten point one, the Clint's Park usage agreement. Ms. Johnson.
Hello, good evening. Uh, we're here tonight, um, seeking approval of the board for the district to sign and enter into, um, the agreement with the city of West Dallas for, uh, use of West Dal-, or for use of Clint's Park for West Dallas Central Softball, um, that is as a result of the Recreation Center Construction Project and, um, then will be the Los Adoral Field. Uh, we've been working with, um, Central's Athletic Director, Justin, and then the head varsity coach, um, at Central, Peter Nitch. That is the preferred location, um, that was their first choice, so, um, it's worked out with the city right now where it's at. It, um, passed Plan Commission and through D P W, just needs to go then to the full Common Council. But I was at the last meeting and, fingers crossed, um, should all be going forward. Um, district staff's working with Steve Share at the city and a few other individuals, so I think it's, it'll be a real positive. We're actually gonna be able to help them. Um, they have some benches they never installed yet, so we'll take care of doing that for them. Um, they're gonna help us with a little bit of, um, we need to put in a little bit of kind of retaining wall on, one side, they're gonna help us with that. So it should be a real positive for everybody in the community, so.
Is this the South Field?
This is actually the West Field, yeah.
So the one that's farthest from the street?
They're both, if, um, Clint's Park, the way it's situated, both diamonds are like right on, is that I think seventy-third, seven, they're right on the street, um, so it is the, would be the northwest field.
Okay. Just getting it in my mind.
Yep. And that was the chosen field, um, so, and it actually works out better just the way the, the field is situated on the property in terms of putting in dugouts. Um, I know a question came up of the cost. Um, our anticipated budget is ten to twelve thousand, and that's a one-time cost to install the dugouts, um, comparable to the price we paid when we put dugouts in at Doral Field a number, I wanna say maybe about two, three years ago. And actually, preliminary numbers are looking like it's gonna even be less, so that's a good thing. Um, other than that, it'll just be a regular, uh, field prep and maintenance that we already were doing at Doral Field. And then, um, some, we're gonna help the city, the bathrooms that they have there are open to the public and they're set on a timer, um, lock switch, so it's hard to determine who's using it when, but, um, we've agreed to clean it after every home game, so it'll be like twice a week. Um, our staff will be over there helping out with that. And then they'll have their regular cleaning schedule as well.
Uh, so you mentioned, I was, and I had asked about the cost, but, um, can we take anything from Doral Field that we're going to be tearing down essentially and utilize it at Clint's? You said, you mentioned we just put in dugouts at Doral Field. Is, uh, is there materials even that we could take and, and reinstall those at Clint's to reduce the cost that we're looking at?
I can ask, but it'll probably be difficult if size is not right, then you have pieces of fencing, um, sometimes once you take, and it's like, I know it's that case for playground equipment, once you start taking things out and trying to reuse them, the insurance, um, sometimes have issues with usability or reusing things. I can ask, um, working with Steve, uh, Rhodey and his team and Joel Alice, and ask if that's even a possibility. And I think some of it'll depend on the company you go with. They may, in order to ensure their work, wanna use their materials.
I mean, is there any plans to keep or, you know, utilize any of the materials from Doral Field anywhere else? At this point, are we looking at, are we just jumping in? Is that the plan?
As of right now, that is the plan. Um, anything that can be, there's some bleachers there, um, the benches that are currently there, those could be. Um, storage is always, um, the challenge in our district, but if there is anything that can be salvaged and reused, yeah, we won't just toss it.
Just as much as we can. I mean, it's possible, I understand that it's not gonna work out sometimes sizing-wise, but, you know, since the dugouts aren't that old, if we, if it could be looked into at least, just to be able to help reduce our costs.
Yep, absolutely.
I'm sure this is, was going on when the athletes were playing at Doral, but do they have to transport themselves there for practicing games, or is there a team bus that goes there?
Yeah, nope. Um, to my knowledge, they have been, and that's, it's varsity. Um, J V will stay at Franklin, which is, and we looked at Franklin as an option. Um, the property's just not big enough to fit two softball diamonds on, so, um, that's why I think two Clint's was one of Peter's top choices. They're already used to getting two rec center on Doral, so it's actually about two to three blocks closer for them, yeah.
You mentioned the restrooms for games. What about during practices?
Same thing, they're, yeah, um, we just, we're gonna have to have some conversation normally, um, 'cause we go through this every fall when we use Reservoir Park for soccer. The city, um, shuts the bathrooms down 'cause they drain the pipes and all that because of freezing and things throughout the winter. We'll have to work with them when it comes springtime. Um, March is typically, I think, a little bit sooner than when they typically open them, um, but weather permitting, they've been awesome to work with, so I don't think we'll have a, you know. And worst-case scenario, we'd have a porta john for a short period of time, which, done the same thing at Reservoir in the past when weather's throwing us some curveballs, we've gotten a porta john for a week or two, um, so we do that there. But, yeah, because they're on the timers, it's really not for practice an issue.
Any other questions?
Moved to approve.
Seconded.
Alright, moved to approve and seconded. Any additional comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Thank you. Thank you, Shirley. Thank you.
All right. Item 10.2, the 2018-2019 Final Budget and Tax Levy Deduct.
Um, okay, so the budget itself has not, um, had any significant changes since the last time that you had budget workshop. It hasn't had any, um, anything of note to kind of change about the budget between now and then. The tax levy did have a shift between what we predicted and what it's going to end up to be because of that additional dollars that we received in state aid. Um, so you can look at the, um, um, if you look at the, uh, front of the resolution, it says, uh, Section 1, that we have levied 41,769,015 dollars upon the taxable property of the school district for the uses and purposes of the school district set forth in the 1819 budget as follows. And then it goes through to explain those dollars. On the back, there's a chart in the documents that explains the general Fund 10 tax levy at the budget hearing, and then in the final budget, and the change to that. Um, so that's the reduction in the levy of 2,028,790 dollars. Um, and then it just mentions the increase in the aid. Any questions? Yeah, no?
So I had asked about this last week, and I know it didn't get calculated, but I think it's important that we include what this means for each one of our communities. So we ran into an issue last year where the amount that we were thinking for West Dallas, West Milwaukee ended up being significantly different for our new Berlin residents and probably for Greenfield as well.
Yep.
And I think that it's a good idea for the district moving forward. Every year when we're doing the tax levy, we have our levy, but what the equalized property value is in each one of those communities is gonna determine what their actual change is going to be, up or down. And, uh, I would like to see that in the communication that we provide to the community for each list, for each one, so they can see which ones will be, what the, what our approved levy is, what the equalized property value is for each one of those communities, and then what the percent change, up or down, and actual change will be for the, for their, you know, per, if you're per 100,000 or per what the average, uh, value home is in that community, so that they can see where I live, what it's gonna be. And then whether it goes up or down every year, we do the same thing. Because I think that will avoid some of the confusion and, you know, frankly, anger that we saw last year because of what we were saying was different and makes it look like we're being dishonest about things when in fact it's just an issue between the different communities and how that works out. So that was not, um, was not calculated over the weekend. I had asked for it to be done, but I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get that out there in a communication sooner rather than later.
Uh, right now, we don't have, uh, a Director of Finance.
I know.
So it, it's been discussed that will be done when the communication goes out to the community before. People aren't usually paying attention to their tax bills until they get the tax bills.
Right.
So that will be ready by then, because Caitlin will have started by then too. So it, it's been noted that that is going to be included, but obviously based on the time limit that was asked versus when it needed to be delivered, there wasn't that time available, nor was there staff to get that produced before today.
Right, I understand.
So that will be communicated before we go out to the general public.
I just want everyone who's watching at home to know that this is something that we're working on.
Yep. Um, and it should be noted that although the levy is going down this year, um, that we anticipate that we will see an, an, another increase in the levy next year pending the sale of the building. So it'll have an impact on the taxes, the way, the tax levy, the way that it did last year as well, with that being additional income to the school district. So it's anticipated that we will see some shifts going into next year with the levy in the opposite direction of where it is right now.
Thank you, Deidra.
Yep. Um, we did discuss that also at direct, our director meeting, Noah, and so that is something that we are anticipating having ready before we go out into the community later on this fall to do some community, um, sessions.
I think it's just important to note, because the, what the equalized property value, what that actually ends up being affects quite a bit, or could affect quite a bit, what the actual change will be.
Yeah.
So it's not dollar for dollar, you know, it's whatever we end up being tonight. It, you can't just go to your tax bill from last, last year and say, "Oh, it's gonna be this much less now."
Right.
No, because it changed not because our equalized property value had changed.
Yep.
Any additional comments or questions on the levy?
And the final budget.
And the final budget. So the, we'd be, uh, looking for a motion on both items.
Both together?
They're together as a line item, yes.
Okay, I'll move.
I'll second.
They moved and seconded. Any additional comments or questions?
I just have one question. Where do we end up with the CIP budget? What was the total amount we ended up in there? Was it 1.5 roughly?
It is...
I don't think it's in this document.
It hasn't shifted since the last time that we did the budget presentation, which I believe it was at 1.2 at that time.
Okay.
Um, there's additional money, so if you look across the Capital Projects Fund, where it says on that right-hand side, the 10 million, some of that includes the projects going on through the energy efficiency as well.
Yeah.
But I can double-check on where the final dollar amount ended up for as far as what Steve's budget is. Is that what you're asking about?
Yeah, for, for non, non X32 CIP budget.
Yep, um, and make sure that that goes out in the board update.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it has been moved and approved and seconded. Any additional comments or questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that goes forward. Okay, um, item number 11. Any suggestions for future agenda items that haven't already been discussed or updated? All right. I just wanna say, you know, I know that the committee work has been going on too, and it sounds like there's some good work happening at all the committees that are then coming forward to the, to the board. So thank you to everybody for the work that they're doing there. Um, if not, we will take a quick, uh, five-minute recess and get ready for, um, our workshop on Alex. Thank you, everyone.